Woo.
It's six thirty, welcome to tonight's study session. I hear myself.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so without any further ado, Mr. Rains.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, a couple of months ago, I had sent out to the mayor and council a briefing on a concept that is being introduced in the police department. And we thought it would be good to, for the chief and his team to come before the council and speak a little bit about the concept that they're looking to unveil here in the next month or so. So, Chief, you want to make any introductions, or you want to just hand it over?
I think everybody knows that's the Chief Winston, Lieutenant Mayor, and Lieutenant Palmer. And mainly Lieutenant Palmer's gonna give the talk today over the PowerPoints, but just to give you a little bit of, of a lead in to this, everybody's aware that we have done D-Dax, and that met with some success. But what we looked at as a, as a department was trying to drill down into different areas of the community, since we have five districts that are patrolled regularly. Then Chris and Reggie came up with a, with a plan that they, they didn't invent, but they found it had success in other departments on a beat team, where a certain area of town, specific beats are patrolled by the same people. And what we are gonna do, and not to steal from Chris, but we're gonna, currently, we do shift change every six months. And what we're gonna start doing after this next one is we're gonna do it yearly. And that way, that, number one, it makes it a little easier for everybody administratively, but number two, it gives officers a solid year to work in one district. And the plan that they've come up with for this beat team will allow around the clock dealing with certain problems in certain districts within the city. So with that, I'll just look. Chris.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to share some of the stuff we've been working on in the police department. Let me see if this, that's the way it goes, alright. So, actually, the end of 2018 going into 2019, we started to reevaluate some of the stuff we were doing, with our major motivation being that we believe community policing is a philosophy that should be embedded throughout the entire department versus a handful of programs that are, you know, intermittently facilitated, and then the police officers go out and do their job. In an effort to do this and to figure out what would be the best way for us to go, we looked at existing programs like D-Dax, some of our existing behaviors, academic research, community policing, beat teams, and routine activity theory were conducted. A lot of this information is not gonna be in this slideshow, but we can make it available to you at a later date if you'd like to see it. Routine Activity Theater states, Theory states that three elements must be present for crime to occur, which is motivated offenders, suitable targets, and the absence of capable guardians, which is the cornerstone of what we're always dealing with, trying to ensure that the community develops their guardianship skills, and that offenders are deterred, and that that opportunity is, is suppressed. So with that in mind, this is what we learned when we went through this. Beat teams, which is all of the officers who work a common beat, Adam District Officers who work day shift, swing shift, or night shift, weekdays or weekends, will be part of the, the Adam District Beat Team. So this helps to generate communication between that group that isn't always happening right now, because of the time differentials in their weekly schedules. They all work a certain squad, and they have a squad cohesion, but we're trying to take that squad cohesion and put it into the beat, and make it a beat cohesion. So, the beat teams will help acculturate the community policing philosophy as a grassroots effort throughout the department. So whereas we have a certain, a certain group of people, or a handful of people right now that will facilitate Coffee with a Cop, Neighborhood Watch, you know, like Thomas Anderson, and Wendy Lloyd, and some of our volunteers, and officers will participate, we want to take that and say, this is your beat, you're the beat team, in your beat, at the micro level, you will now facilitate your programs, but you will also build partnerships with your stakeholders in order to carry out this, this foundational criminological approach based on routine activity theory. We learned the beat teams will favorable, will be favorable to problem solving, delivering the micro approach to current programs like D-Dax. So whereas we've been doing D-Dax at a citywide level, and we have a hotspot in the city, and then we instruct officers who work different districts to filter in and out of this hotspot when they can, we realized it would be better if we had a hotspot in every district, and we had a team in each district that was responsible for their geographical area and that hotspot, and they would have a little more ownership, and it would be a little bit more narrowed. And so you would have five districts doing five D-Dax zones, instead of one city doing one big D-Dax zone, and it becomes a little bit more ambiguous. The beat teams will enhance and bring consistency to internal and external communications, helping to facilitate a communication between these team members that isn't currently happening, through our new Teams software that was recently installed. These guys have it on their phones, they have it in their cars, they have it on their desktops, and the Teams program is very quick communication to specific groups that you establish in these teams, which will be by, per district. So, Adam District Officers can communicate with each other this way, not just via email, but through this beat, through this Teams program, and share real-time information that pops up on their computer as soon as they log in to go to work. And, and they'll also share this in bimonthly meetings. It's gonna enhance and bring consistency to internal and external communication through the meetings that we will have bimonthly. These groups will invite community members and stakeholders in that geographical area to come to these meetings. The first part of the meeting will be open to the public, they'll exchange information, they'll answer questions, they'll get feedback from people there, and then the second half of the meeting will be for the officers privately to share intelligence, to wrap their head around what they've learned from the community members. It'll be like this real-time communication that's happening. They will organize that. Sergeants will be assigned to a beat team to facilitate these meetings, but they won't run the meeting, they're not gonna be in charge of the meeting, there are a liaison between command and the group. Officers will be given the autonomy with the corporal chairperson to run the meeting, get the information, and then problem solve. The beat teams will eliminate obstacles which hinder officers' ability to think outside the box. So we're gonna empower these officers, when they see a problem, come up with a plan to solve it, and then to reach out to community resources, both in the city and outside the city, that they think may help to, to achieve that, and to present that proposal to their facilitator sergeant. Beat teams will establish greater line-level autonomy, generating more flexible and responsive service delivery. The problem solving, the autonomy is good for problem solving, for internal development and generating ownership, and it builds leaders within the department, which is also crucial for us right now.
Hey, Chris, let me jump in there. Mayor and Council, as everybody knows, on our drop program, in the next four years, we're gonna lose seven supervisors. And we only have fifteen. So, we're gonna lose close to half in, in the next four years, we're gonna lose, I think, six. No, we're gonna lose two additional in the, in the year following that. So part of the idea of this is to give officers a chance to problem solve, and kind of step up amongst their peers, to come up with different ideas, and hopefully, through all that process, not to take away from what it's gonna do for the community, but selfishly, this is gonna give us a chance to look at individual officers, and groups of officers to see who can maybe raise the, rise to the occasion and fill our supervisory ranks. Because not only are we gonna be missing a lot of talent and a lot of experience on our supervisors, we have several veteran officers in that timeframe that are also leaving. So we need something to fill that void, and we thought this would be a dual benefit for everybody.
Yes, Councilmember Powell.
I just want to comment, I thought this was such a great idea when I saw it. And, and you look at the Fire Department, they have crews, and they have guys there that work together, and they have a sense of pride and a sense of accomplishment as a crew. And if you had a football team, and you just keep sending new people in there, but they keep changing, it, they're not gonna win any games. And I think this is such a good idea. John Holland, you remember John Holland? Community policing was his, his big thing, and I think this is like community policing on steroids, breaking it into groups, and then making those connections out in the different areas that you're working in. I think, I think it's a great, great idea.
Thank you, sir. And to that point, Councilmember Powell, what we learned through our research is that it is not uncommon, in fact, it's, it's commonplace, for police departments to really fail to embed community policing, as you just described it, on steroids. They have programs, they have a community policing officer, but to really, to really get it into the line level, at that grassroots level, where you say, "Community policing is what you do, not what we do, or decide to do and tell you about it, and then we use it as a catchphrase while we go out and do just standard routine police work." We demonstrate great customer service, and our guys do a great job, but this is gonna take it to another level, because it's going to, the problem solving issue and the, and the partnership with the community is what I think we're missing. Whereas we do invite community members to get involved, when we go out and we actually solicit them for problem solving, and we're meeting in their neighborhoods, in their community, bimonthly with them, and they have that input. There's also a social media model to this, where we market the program, but we're working with the web designer currently for an interactive map online, so they can go to the city website, they can click on their district, or they can either type in their address to find out what district they're in, what beat, and then, or they can click on the district, and it'll open up, it'll see the sergeant and the squad members that are assigned to the beat team, it'll have emails and phone numbers, we'll share information on upcoming meetings, and where it will be held, and things like that, and although, although there may be some challenges going into the first part of the year as we slow-roll this out, with COVID, we may be looking at some more online meetings and stuff, but...
One of the things you mentioned is basically, when you have a team, you get informal leaders on that team, and those are the ones you may want to pick out to promote or to, to move up. As Chief talks about, we're, might be missing some people, but I think, I think the team idea is just, is just really good.
Yes, sir. So the target population, internal, obviously, is the police administration, line-level supervisors, the officers, our civilian personnel, and our volunteers. And we're already introducing this to them. External partners, citizens, city partners, beat teams may reach out to other city departments for assistance with beat issues or beat projects. This could be a city department director, or it could also be just a private business owner. Business community partners, social service stakeholders, and clergy, and these will be key members to invite to our meetings. The program entails unifying the patrol officers who work common beats, patrol sergeant facilitators with corporal chairpersons on these teams. They will establish beat profiles, they will establish annual goals for their beats. Permanent beat assignments, as of next fiscal year, starting in July, will be annually, instead of every six months, so that we have consistency in those beats and those members for at least a year. The bimonthly meetings, portions of those open to citizens, and then the others for the officers. Information sharing via officer contacts and social media platform, interactive beat map on the city website. We'll also have some postcards in the works, like we did with D-Dax, that'll identify beat teams and have specific members, so we can distribute them in specific districts. Beat team activities incorporated into employee evaluations at some point, and the federal JAG community policing grants, which we've already acquired some, and have some on the books now for our, our rollout, that are gonna help reduce overtime. We do expect some overtime with this, we do hope to curb most of it with, with these types of grant programs as well, but we think that it's worth it. Implementation, introduction meetings with command supervisors and line-level personnel, this is happening now, we're actually at the point where we're gonna start having meetings going into December with the squads, and we're gonna start establishing some of the profiles and things like that. The team members are gonna change come February, when we have another shift bid, then we'll have kind of a dry run through June, and then in July, when we do our shift bid for that annual year, will be our full rollout for that fiscal year. We hope to track things fiscally, because we believe that it's better number-wise, statistical-wise, to track it fiscally. We sent out the community newsletter preview already, to let people know that it was coming last month, and... Patrol Division Squad Matrix, what that is, is that's a schedule where it shows all of the personnel in their current squads, but then it also ties to what beat they would be associated with, and who their facilitator will be. The pros, it elevates community policing, it enhances communication, builds lasting partnerships, it nurtures autonomy in decision-making, building leaders within our organization, and it reduces crime. The cons, obviously, it will take time, it has, we've been working on this for a while, we would have been a lot further ahead had we not run into COVID. We kind of started out dealing with civil unrest for a little bit, and then ran into COVID-19, and so this year's been a little bit busy, but we haven't stopped this, we've been working on it on the side, and we've been slowly implementing it, so, but we should be good this coming year. Funding concerns, which is why we're using grants, and department buy-in, which so far has been positive.
Question is, is seeing as far as funding concerns, as far as grants, how dependent is this program on grants? If you even put a percentage to it, or however you wanna...
It's dependent on grant funding, but not to the point, we don't think it's gonna cost so much that if grant funding is limited, we can't offset it or work around it. We do believe we're gonna incur overtime, with grant funding or without, we're gonna incur it, but we have some wiggle room, and then we have the flexibility of scheduling and, and how we schedule it, and if we need to move from a bimonthly to a quarterly meeting temporarily, depending on grants availability. But right now, it looks very positive. Our JAG grants, we've never had an issue acquiring them, we have several on the books right now that we're using for this training and our rollout, we have one we just acquired that's sitting there waiting as we do our dry run, and we believe that most of that's gonna take care of a lot of those issues.
And, and I just hate to see this, I would hate to see this take steps backward, just because of the lack of, of funding, and that, something like this, in reading that multi-page report that I had, and everything else, is, this is so important to our community, that I love the idea, let's do as many grants as possible, but I'd not like to see us take a step back because of lack of funding.
Councilmember Courts, and I agree with you, and we have thought about that, and our plan would be to come back, if we needed to come to council with a, for, you know, to explain that we may be running a little higher in overtime because of grant funding, or whatever we're doing, we would have a plan, we would be consistently on top of that, so we could deal with it internally, and then the chief could come and present if we needed to address any changes in that.
Great.
Because we also agree that it's important.
Donna, you had a question?
Just a, a couple comments, Chris. First of all, I think it's a great idea for a retention effort, because we've got to start looking at how we can keep these officers that we have and move them up, and the best way to do that is to, to, you know, intertwine them in leadership, so I, I love that concept. My question is, how do you see, and Chief, I know that you and I have had lots of discussions about this, about the Police Advisory Board, and how do you see perhaps this board can help with this, as far as citizen activity and input? Because we're talking about five different, you know, areas of the city, and I think it's a five-member board, at least, five or seven, but I'm just, I'm just wondering how we could utilize that board for your advantage on that. So I don't know, I don't, I'm looking at both of you for answers, so I don't want to put you on the spot, Chris.
Donna, obviously, I think they, they would play a part in it, they're, they're looking for ways to get involved, they're looking for ways to get the word out, and plus, I also think that, on the flip side of that, the more interactions that we have in different pockets of the city, because there will be interactions on this, and it may not be standing room only, you know, but there'll be more than we're doing right now, outside the concept of like Coffee with a Cop, these will actually be areas and meetings where we're actually talking to people about issues in their neighborhood, not just glad-handing, and how you doing, and all that. So I think what may develop from that is, and we're hopeful, that once we do start meeting again with the Police Advisory Board, we'll finally get an audience, or we'll finally get people that'll come in and want to talk to them, and we'll have them involved, they're aware of this, we give them the, all our updates, all our press releases, when you get it, they've got it, things like that, so they know this is coming. So, I think it'll, it'll make them stronger, and we'll find a way to incorporate them in this, in this project, either by getting the word out through some of their churches, through whatever, to try to get people involved that live in different pockets in the city.
Okay, thank you.
Chris, you're, you're not done yet, are you?
I was just gonna add, we would invite them to the meetings, and, and propose that with the seven members, they just maybe designate one member or two members to go to a certain meeting, and they all spread out, and then they come back together, and they can talk about what they learned.
Is your presentation over yet?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, let, let him finish, and hold your questions, please, let, let Chris finish his presentation, go ahead.
We've got a, we're on slide four of seventy-five, so we're almost... Actually, so that, so here we're... So overall, the idea behind this is to really get the squads, or the officers, to come together and share their, their information and their needs and their issues within the beats, but also doing this with the people that live in those communities, so that instead of being reactive, they're being more proactive to problem solving, and it's gonna generate some openness, communication, and, you know, it's gonna be, we're gonna have some bumps, and it's gonna go, and we're gonna learn from it, and, you know, smooth it out, but I think that it's gonna be pretty incredible, so. Thank you for your time, any questions?
Mr. Powell, you had a question? No question?
I'll be a gentleman.
Thank you. I know, I was waiting till the end of the presentation.
Go ahead, Lisa. Thank you, thank you for doing that, Donna.
Well, you know, first of all, I'm gonna agree with what these guys say, I mean, it, I, I'm happy to see that you're trying something new, you know, of course, you know, with everything going on in the country, you know, with, with police officers, and we know how much they do, and how much they mean, and, and, and we value everything that you guys do in the community, and I'm, I'm happy to see that you're trying something new to, to be transparent, and open the communication, you know, levels in the community, so I, I'm really excited about it, I think it's gonna be great. But of course, you know, when I was looking at the pros and cons, you know, I just wanted to make sure, you know, first of all, is there buy-in, you know, how does the department feel about doing it? I really hope that they're seeing this as something positive, but I was curious about that. And then, how are you gonna determine those, those teams? You know, you, 'cause you, I mean, I'm sure you face this, I'm sure, you know, Councilmember Huggins faces this for years, that sometimes people feel that they're getting chosen for a particular area for a certain reason, and is it click-ish, is it because you like this person, they're gonna get that, you know, you know, that area? So I'm, I'm curious how you're gonna determine that, and how often will you change those teams?
Once a year.
Oh, once a year, you said? Once a year, okay, sorry, I missed that part of it. So, so yeah, if you can kind of give me a little bit, I know you said that they're positive, if you can just give me a little bit more feedback on, you know, what they're saying, and how you're going to choose those teams.
Yes, so Councilmember Fitzgibbons, in the meetings we've had up to this point with the supervisors, and some of the initial meetings with the squads, just, we have an officer group that represents all of the squads, where there's a representation from every squad, as an officer that comes and we discuss software upgrades, policy changes, things like that. So supervisor group, officer group, right now, completely on board, very supportive, no main, you know, major issues, they had some questions, but they understood it, they liked the idea, and as we start rolling it out to the actual line level, I believe we're gonna have the same response, because I've spoken to a lot of them one-on-one, and shared it with them, and we've been talking about this for a year. So it's not new to them, we've been going through the stages to roll it out, but we've been putting it in their ear, we've been throwing it out, every time we have a meeting, we talk about something, we talk about how, and this is gonna be good for the beat team program, and this is gonna be good, so it's been embedded, and, and, and right now, yeah, it looks great, the, the response. The other question was about the, selecting the teams. So, currently, officers go to a squad, they bid for their squad based on seniority, they get on graveyards, then the sergeant will go around the room on the first day of the start of the shift, and they'll, based on seniority, they'll bid for beats, and they'll, I want Adam District, I want David District, and they'll bid that. So once we establish where they're gonna land, after they set themselves up, then we put them in the matrix, and that will determine, we take all the Adam District Officers, you're on the Adam Team, and then we assign a sergeant facilitator, and they already know that that's coming, because they picked that beat.
Okay.
And so that, and that's how we do that.
Okay.
Mr. Powell, you had a question?
Just, just two comments, one thing, it's a one-year assignment, and, and those people have to get together pretty good in a year's time, working together where they know more about each other, and also the areas that they're responsible for. And, and I think one of the things that we need to be really concerned about is officer safety, with what's been happening all over the United States, and I think this, if you have a team involved, instead of a guy out there by himself, or maybe one partner, if you have a team working, I think it's gonna be a lot safer than it would be, than what we're seeing in different locations right now.
That's correct.
Matt, you had a comment, question?
Yes, I do, I got a quick one. Again, thank you guys very much, a lot of good stuff here, like everyone said, I'm not gonna, to go over all that, but what I like too, is the D-Dax program has seemed to work very well, and we get to one area, but this is gonna have its own, like, little D-Dax area in each district now, and the people in those districts are gonna know who's, what the problems are, who the problems are, and, and help you guys, so I really appreciate that. When you said the bimonthly meetings, I was like, so I get a meet, but I didn't realize at first are community meetings, which I'm, I'm a real big fan of. And Chief, to your point, you, you've always been really good with us in the last couple years, keeping us up to date on your plans moving forward with personnel, you're to be commended, all of you, for using this program to help, help us bring them up through the ranks as well, so I'm a really big fan of that, and, and, you know, the important part is having the, the guardians, I think that's what you said, right, the guardians?
Yes, sir.
That's what we're doing, so I just hope you get good buy-in, because I think it's a great plan and a great way for our community.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Chris, I applaud you guys for taking this on and pushing in that direction. I also appreciate you mentioning that community policing has been around for a long time, it takes different forms and, and different titles, and, and it, there's been successes and failures across the country, and the, the issues at hand generally are building strong partnerships with the community. Sometimes it's tough to get people involved, I mean, nobody wants crime in their neighborhood, but sometimes attending a meeting and sticking with it is difficult for people, so I, I noted down partnerships and communications are, are key in, in the program, I know I'm not telling you anything you don't already know, but I also wrote down, how do we measure success? And I don't know if there's a, a solid answer to that, but I, I, I understand getting the buy-in from the officers that are actually gonna be out there performing these duties, and that's very good, but I think we need to stick with them as far as measuring success, and ask them, six months down the road, a year down the road, is this working, and, and if not, what, what are our challenges, what are, what are we missing? What are, what are we missing? It's still difficult to keep five shift officers communicating and focused on the same problem within their district. There'll, there'll be some that, will jump all over that and be gung ho and, and want to make that work on a daily basis. And there may be others that, that don't really buy into it. So I, I, as I said, I applaud you guys for taking it on. I do think this is, you know, the future of policing. I think it's important. I think it's important for our community. So anyway, I, I just encourage you to stick with it and keep pounding it out. I, I think it'll work if given, given the right direction.
Thank you, Councilmember Huddles. And one of the things that you just mentioned, it's, we have something built into the program, which is quarterly evaluations. So quarterly we'll look at qualitative and quantitative data in the form of interviews with the officers and surveys, and also with the citizens who will participate to garner that information and determine its success or failures, so we can change the profiles if need be. And this is something that the beat teams will do. The officers will do this. They will be gathering this information. We will too, at a certain level, for command perspective, and also looking at the crime rate reduction, things like that from the bird's eye view. But they're going to be dealing with that to gather information from their communities to find out, you know, hey, do we need to adjust this beat profile going forward? Do we need to change our focus here? Do we need to reevaluate the D-Dax zone in District A? You know, that kind of thing. So that's part of that, to help us deal with those issues you just mentioned.
Okay. Thank you. Good luck.
Mary, did you have a comment, additional comment you wanted me?
I'm good.
Okay.
I think it's great.
All right, anybody else? All right, seeing none, then I just want to personally thank you guys for this. I think this is a great program. I think it'll be great for our community. Also, while you're all here, I just want to commend your, your investigators for catching those, those guys this past week. So thank, please, please give them our thanks. We really appreciate that.
Good job.
Thank you, guys.
That's right.
Okay, let's stand adjourn for five minutes. We'll start the city council meeting at, at 7:05. Larry, is there anything else on, on the study session? Okay, so we'll stand adjourn.